So when you go, we go through the normal, normal routine?
Yes, sir.
So it's a call a meeting to order now, the, the, give the invocation. Could you please stand? Lord, we thank you for our many blessings. We ask you to come into this house and guide us to make the right decisions, the best decisions for our community and citizen. Lead us to do the right things down the right path. In Jesus' name, amen. Sir?
The Blue Angels fly over now?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, this is a, the special meeting to discuss the four things that, with regard to the different grants that we're working on. First on the agenda is to consider for discussion the CDVG grant 2023-24 Street Project. We just had a town hall meeting on that. We have a meeting set with the engineers on the 10th of this month. We end with our grant administrator. We need to decide on a project for the $500,000 that is in this grant. It must meet the load of moderate income requirements that are in play. So there's been discussion on 27th, 28th, and recently Friar Tuck. Tommy, do you have any, you've had some experience with this or?
Well, we didn't look at Friar, Friar Tuck, but 27th to 28th, 28th Street has the most, most houses. It's also been, it's the one that was worked on before, so if you're gonna look for base, it's got more possibilities there. But 27th Street is equally as useful for those people back in the back. Either one of those will be good for them to come back up to the, to the front because both of them are in terrible shape.
I had considered, or had thrown out 27th at one time because it runs by the fire department and leads back to the, that well station number five where the four inch line is there for rapid fill of the pump trucks.
Right. I don't think it really matters. Fire, Fire Department said that David could fix part of the road that comes from 27th, from 28th over there, and that would take care of it, but they're not concerned. Either, either road will work for them.
So just, just for the benefit of our conversation, David and I have had some conversation about bringing in a BOMAG to, it's a big rotor tiller to just churn up Friar Tuck and grind it, grind it up as fine as we can and then come back with this mixture of the, the ash slag, wood, wood chips and, and road dirt that we're using.
Now, that seems to be holding up pretty well according to what we've seen.
That would be, that would be quite an improvement for Friar Tuck because it's, it's just impossible.
I know. All those roads back there need major work. So whichever one we choose is beneficial.
Do y'all have any, any idea or suggestion or, or preference for between 27th and 28th?
No, I would probably do the one that has the most people already living on it since it's mostly traversed. And if it's not gonna have a problem with the Fire Department, then I don't see a problem in doing it on the 28th.
Yes, sir.
One thing we might want to give a little thought to is on the map that you guys have behind you.
Yes, sir.
Some of the flood mitigation. If you'll notice, I think it's on 28th Street. There's a section in there of 800 feet that they have identified and proposed. I don't know if those two projects can be worked into conjunction with each other at the same time if they have to be separate.
28th Street? They should be able to, I would think. I mean, we don't want to be walking all over each other or worse, double spending.
Well, and that would, that might save a few dollars with doing that 800 feet with new culverts and that type of stuff. Instead of 27th. Just, just food for thought, folks. Just, just trying to save a buck here.
Thoughts, Tommy?
Well, I think we probably need to find out when that 800 feet is gonna be done, you know, which, is that part of the eight million or?
Yeah, yeah, that's part of the eight million.
So I don't know. I guess that would be a question we ask the engineers, can they do it at the same time?
Right, right.
It's two separate pockets of money?
Yeah. That, that could be a problem.
We can, we can address that next, uh, the 10th when we have our meeting with the, the grant administrator and the engineers.
Good idea, yeah. That'll work.
Okay. So we're, 28th has the most number of, they have about the same number of buildings, but 28th has the most number of residents.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense. So we'll shoot for 28th. And see, you'll be present for that meeting, David, so we'll be able to discuss the ramifications of the mixing of the two grants.
That's, that's fine, yeah. And I've got some other questions. Some of the wording that they use when they come in and talk about doing the ditches, new culverts. They only mentioned to, to, to harden the surface. I would like to get their definition of harden the surface. Does that mean to be repaved with asphalt, limestone, Portland cement? I don't know what they're, what they're talking about there.
Devils in the details.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So I guess we're in agreement on 28th Street. I don't know that a motion needs to be called for. We're gonna be hammering this out over time, right, CD?
Right.
Okay.
So you want, you want to apply for the grant for 28th Street?
Uh, yeah, yes.
And how, how would that benefit the Fire Department?
In conjunction with bringing in the BOMAG to churn up Friar Tuck, then they'll have smooth access from the Fire Department all the way to, is it 22nd Street or?
Neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah, it goes, goes to the end and, uh, we'll, we'll end right there at pump station number five. So 28th will also give, that'll give them smoother access to the well also. By service, and it'll also service more homeowners by doing 28th.
Okay. And will, and will the new ash mix support the fire trucks?
Absolutely. Without a doubt.
Weight limit?
None whatsoever. It will hold. We went back and looked at some of these roads that we did about six months ago, and there's very little, very little wear on, on all of those.
So why don't you share with, with Councilman Warren the records that you're keeping on the, when you put the roads down and how they're holding up?
Well, we've just got them, you know, what month we did them in and going over them every month and driving just to make sure that they are holding up, or is it time for another thin layer to go over those? And so far, since we started in August, all the roads are in great shape that we put down. So that, that material is, is 100% holding like it should.
Yeah, but my, my concern would be the fire trucks and the weight.
Yeah.
So can we get it tested? Drive a fire truck down there a couple times, make sure it is holding?
Sure. Not a problem.
When you redid the roads, are you taking them down flat level and then adding the ash slag menter on top or?
What we do is, is normally take the material that is there from the edges of the road, the ditch edges, bringing it up to a crown and then coming back with this material so the roads have a nice crown to where they, they drain much better than they have before.
Okay.
So far, comparing this to the limestone that we use before so much, this is outlasting the limestone.
Okay.
The only complaint I've had is that it's a little dusty when it first goes down until the first rain. And then it, then it packs down and the, the dust is negligible after that.
Okay.
The item number two. Bond project, we need to decide on a project to use the remaining bond funds. As of the end of November, we had $392,000. So we need to, this, I've asked the engineering company, LJA, to make their recommendations on what we can do to get the most bang for the buck with that remaining money. And I'm, I'm also a little reluctant to spend it because we, who knows what the future costs are going to be? We may need it for supplemental work down the road. Tommy, you got any thoughts?
Well, what we were gonna use it for is repaving an overlay of Camelot, South Camelot, or Camelot.
Right here.
You're right. From, from Lakewood to, uh, excuse me, from Avonhoe Drive over to Camelot.
Okay. Uh, to the dam?
Dam.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know, you know, we, we have less than 400,000, so, you know, we have to get the engineers to look at that because some of that, when we were looking at before, looked pretty good, except the edges are all torn up.
Yeah, David has made mention of that.
Yeah. But that, that's what we were looking at. That's the only one we were looking at.
So the, the, the big additional factor is the, the precinct one GLO, 1.2 million dollar grant to do Avonhoe Drive from the monuments to Charmaine Drive East.
Yeah, this would tie into it on Camelot.
Yes. But that frees up a lot of money to go elsewhere.
It does, yeah, because that's a major job there. They're gonna undertake it, the county, so that's a good deal.
That is. It, it really is. So, does anybody have any, any reservations about doing Camelot from Avonhoe Drive to the dam?
No.
Just, just to, just to lay the rest of it, my thought process out was that at some point, we're gonna have enough money, I would think, to take Charmaine Drive. There was plans to do parts of Charmaine Drive East.
Yeah, I think that, isn't that part of the eight million?
Yeah.
It's part of it.
Close to, well, um. It was gonna, it was gonna go to, uh, it was gonna go to Avonhoe Drive and end at Candy Cane Park. But I would, I would propose that we do Charmaine Drive East all the way to Chanticleer so that we've got a good circle all the way around.
Yeah, it needs it. That's for sure.
Go ahead, David, please.
We've done some prep work as far as, we don't know when they're gonna do that, the county for us.
Yes, sir.
But we have about 24 to 36 culverts that need to be replaced, that will probably come out of my budget, which is a lot of money. Is there any way that the road bond could be used for those culverts and their installation?
I, I don't see why not. I mean, it's part of the project. It's to, you, I don't see how you can put in a new road and not replace a, a culvert that needs replacing.
Well, and there, there's some areas that, that needs cross culvert across the main road, and, and we certainly want to get all of that done before they come in with the new road. We don't want to have to go back and, and cut anything out.
Are you talking about Avonhoe Drive?
Yes.
I would think that'd be part of the 1.9 pace for that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, okay. I was just looking for alternative ways except not coming out of my budget.
I understand that.
That's, that's a lot of money.
I owe you that information too.
Okay, okay, good deal.
So do we, do we need to get the engineering company to give us?
I think so because, you know, even just overlay it, it, we may not have enough money to do that. You know, I don't know.
Uh, do?
Camelot.
A number, it'd be good to get a number on it.
Yeah.
We'll have, we'll, we'll get them to start working on that next week when we have our meeting with them.
Okay, yeah, sounds good.
Tommy, you, you did say and agreed, I think, that the edges are what's eroding.
Mostly, yes.
Mostly, yeah. There, there's some holes that I think they would have to cut out prior to an overlay and redo, but it may not be necessary.
And there where the split is, where the tree used to be, I think that needs to be consolidated down to one lane, or well, two lanes, but not the way it is now.
Yeah, I agree.
And that was part of what, uh, when we looked at that sometime back, um, I believe it was, um, one of our construction guys, and they were, they were saying that most of it on that road there can be an overlay.
Okay, okay.
But the edges really need to be reinforced somehow.
Need to be cut out and, and, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Can that be done?
That would be quite an undertaking for us to do.
Okay.
But I'm not gonna say it's impossible. We just fall behind a little bit on some things.
I wasn't suggesting that your crew did that. I was just asking if it.
It needs to be done.
Okay.
It, it needs to be done. If not, they're just gonna patch like they would any other part of the road and prep for an overlay. And with those edges, that's, that's just not good enough.
So you're saying the bond for Camelot, as far as it'll go?
Right, right.
And then the GLO project, the 1.9, that's bond funds for Camelot and an overlay, since an overlay is not expected to be as expensive?
Right, it's the edges that's gonna cost a, a little bit extra.
GLO 1.9 million dollar discussion has been for Lakewood Drive's rehabilitation, so that's, that's where that's gonna go.
Yeah, and I think that'll take every bit of it.
Yeah, okay. So that's, you and I had talked about the culverts on Lakewood.
Yes, yes.
Then beginning the process where it's not a rush job, you can use it as fill in.
Yeah, and the same thing on, on Lakewood. Uh, you know, there's, there's numerous culverts on that that's gonna have to be replaced.
That's what I was talking about, but, uh, Avonhoe Drive, we're, we're gonna, we may have to carry the burden of that cost ourselves.
Okay, okay.
I, I will talk to Joe Blackshire though and get clarification.
Okay, yeah, we just, we just need to know so we can, we can prep that area well, well before, well before they come out here and, and start doing their stuff.
Well, if we have to bear the burden of the culverts on, on Lakewood, maybe we should look at the bond money going towards those culverts. Either or.
I don't, I don't know that, uh, I, I said Avonhoe Drive a while ago. Lakewood is the one that we were looking at. A lot of it can be an overlay, but there's some parts of it that have to be redone, new surface, new, new, um.
Yeah, yeah, parts of it, like Chanticleer used to be.
Right, exactly, exactly. So that, 1.4 may not, you know, if you, we have to put in, they have to put in culverts all those places. It may not work. You know, we may have to put in those culverts ourselves, but we won't know until the engineers look at it.
Look at it. I mean, maybe just an either or so we can have information in front of us that we can make a decision.
I think the culverts on Lakewood are more important than redoing Avonhoe Drive, I mean, Camelot, excuse me.
I would agree.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And culverts would help with drainage and everything else that we desperately need to stop the erosion on each side.
Could the, could the culverts be in conjunction with the flood mitigation money? No?
It's specific to those.
To those projects, okay, okay.
And I think on the, uh, Lakewood Drive, that's county, so I don't know who the engineer firm, what is your information?
Uh, Waxman. Oh, that's the grant administrator. No, they haven't. They're familiar with LJA. I don't know if they've used LJA. Well, when I, yeah, they are, and I've, I've let Victoria know that the county is gonna be doing Avonhoe Drive, and she's like, okay, it's good to know. We'll, we'll, we'll take that out of our planning work. I'll find out. I can make a call to Joe and find out.
No.
No. Yeah, and, yeah.
They have to post it in the paper, and then they turn in a bid to do it, and then there's a review process, and then it's awarded to engineering firm.
So just a quick recap on where we are. We're, we're looking at 28th Street for the CDVG grant. We're still up in the air about the $392,000 between Camelot and, and Lakewood. Or the culverts.
Gotta do what we gotta do.
Yeah, you know, it, it may end up falling on our utility department.
We, we can do it. I just need to know well in advance because this is not gonna happen over a week, a month, or two months.
Yeah, you and I have talked about that. We're not, we're not gonna come to you and say you need to put in 20 culverts and, within three weeks.
Thank you. Do you want me to bring them up to date on the fog seal?
Yes, sir, please.
Is now a good time or?
Sure.
Okay. Over on, in front of Helipad Park, at the end of Galahad Dam to about Avonhoe Estates Drive, that area was beginning to crack as did on Charmaine South. And I contacted Gulf Coast. They immediately came out, said, yes, it's their problem. It's their fix under warranty. They came out and did the seal coat, used the tape, which I think gives a much neater job, a much better job. And at this point, the road is, is sealed from any further water getting through the surface that would undermine the materials below it. Their other thought process was once they do that on their dime, that they will come back out on their dime and fog seal that entire section there that they did. They were trying to squeeze it in last week. They were trying to squeeze it in this week. I talked with them today and just gave them my suggestion. You, you've stopped the danger of the water eroding the road further. Why don't we just wait until we get warmer weather? It has to be above 60 degrees. And we're also gonna be fighting not only our normal traffic, but if it's during school time, we're gonna be fighting the school buses on, on some pretty lengthy detours. So at that point, I asked him if he could guarantee they could come in at eight and be gone by three. He said, as the weather gets warmer, yes. At this point, no. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I just made this suggestion, and I'll make the same suggestion to y'all. I would suggest wait a couple of months, two or three, till the weather begins to warm up at 70, more around eight o'clock in the morning to where they can get on it and we have drier spells of water before we do that fog seal.
I agree with that.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that, and my suggestion would be to wait. We're not in any harm anymore since they, they crack sealed that road. We're in good shape.
So the, the last thing on the agenda is to talk about this text dot alternate transportation grant. In talking to Victoria today, this has to be paid for. It's a reimbursement type of a grant. And it, and the way that it's, we were moving forward with it was to try to get golf cart paths around the city. I don't, I don't think that this fits in with Avonhoe. We don't have room for golf carts, or golf, golf paths, paths, excuse me. We don't have room for golf paths. Golf cart paths. Thank you. I'm struggling with that. And I don't know that we have the financial ability to pay for everything upfront and then turn in and wait to be reimbursed, even if it's 100% reimbursement, which it is. So personally, my recommendation is we just set this aside and, and say, we'll look for something else. Anybody got any additional comments or thoughts?
Can you hear me now? Okay. So I would agree with setting it aside, and not even from a cost analysis standpoint. We start looking at drainage, narrow roads. I, I think our time and resources would be better spent taking a look at other things that will have a greater impact. Who says we can't pursue this later down the road where, when the roads are in a better position? I mean, I don't want David coming after all of us because we put an extra burden on his crew for something else to build or maintain. Just my two cents.
Yeah. I'm in agreement there.
Is this where y'all were planning to do the, like, sidewalk from the front of Avonhoe coming back or?
My, yeah, something like that. It, it would be a four foot wide golf cart path. And I don't know that we've got room, we don't have room between the edge of the road and the, the property line.
Right. Yeah.
Do we need a motion on this one?
Basic sidewalk, maybe, but not a golf cart path, not, not for this particular thing.
Yeah, we, we could wind up chasing this resource and the light company says, eh, shut it down last minute.
Well. What, what the, what Sam Houston said is that their ground is not assignable.
Yeah, okay, well, that cuts out that.
That cuts that out.
Yeah, that, that shuts it down right there.
Yeah, their ground, their, their dirt, their dirt, yeah, their dirt is not assignable, period.
End of discussion.
CD, is it, with this text dock grant, are there any alternatives to the, the, the non-motorized transportation? Or the alternative transportation grant? Is it lighting?
Bicycle?
I don't know where it goes as far as lighting.
Sidewalks?
That wasn't really covered in that.
Bike trail?
Well, it's alternative transportation, and it's really designed for walking or bikes. The golf part, golf cart part, because we have a number of folks that, that do have golf carts, but it's really designed for non-motorized vehicles. I think you will see one, if you go towards Lefkin. Zavala just had one put in on this end of this, uh, going between their, their school district and the downtown area.
To the bike trail, uh, to the, um, trailhead.
Yeah, yeah. It's four feet wide. It's, yeah, and it's, it's, uh, well off of the highways, but we don't have that kind of room.
Don't have that much room.
Yeah, and as, as far as lighting goes, Angela, I think her name was, we spoke to earlier, she mentioned a downtown commercial revitalization grant, said that those things could, lighting was mentioned in that discussion. Uh, so that's a resource that I think we should look into if we're looking at.
It'd be commercial property.
Could it be a commercial?
Yeah, it's commercial property.
Ah, well, in that case, never mind. I missed the fact that it had to be commercial.
Shouldn't we have a trail directly to the Dollar General? As Avonhoe, are we looking to eventually have a small downtown area, shopping, conference?
It, it would, it would be nice. I don't know where or how. You know, there's just no commercial property except up front.
And that's just because of the way it's previously zoned?
Yes. That's not to say we can't change or alter the, the zone, zoning ordinances.
And the Dollar Store is here. Boston says it's here, and all this here is commercial. And this right here is commercial.
I've learned not to make light comments or jokes while sitting here. They're taken the wrong way. They're taken the wrong way.
Austin's own net.
Austin's, it was the couple.
I think they have 43 acres.
Yeah, that, that, they're selling 20 acres for $385,000 if you're interested.
Yeah, city council doesn't pay me that much.
I know. Yeah. So I, I guess that, that's, I don't know what else to do with that text dot alternate transportation grant other than to just say, you know, no action. We'll set it aside for now and maybe sometime in the future we can come back to it. So that concludes everything that, that I have. Does anybody have any comments? Mr. Morris?
I agree with Mr. Councilman Morris.
So you're motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned, C.D.
I said, can I take that home or is it sitting, it's yours?
Yeah, that, I said we'll get you now. I wrote this from when they prepared about all these grants.
That's exactly.
Dawn coming up next week?
I'm, I'm not sure if Dawn is, I could ask her to come.
Can you get, or Victoria?
Yeah.
Can you get her one of these maps?
I would like a map.
She wants one map.
No, only senior council figure can have a map.